High school and she is a senior and you may remember that Michaela received an award at the state level for being the aspiring educator of the year for Tennessee. And so Michaela was nominated for her cooperation, work ethic, leadership, community involvement, consideration to others and assisting others in need, outstanding attitude, outstanding grades and being a positive role model for other students. Ms. Angela Stokes writes that Michaela is always willing to help those around her. She was recently chosen to receive the aspiring educators award. She serves as the MHS FCC LA president. She is a cheerleader and always has a smile on her face. So we want to say congratulations to Michaela. And finally, our teacher of the month. We have Ms. Vicky Lake from Covington Middle School. I'll go get it right eventually. Ms. Lake is here with one of her colleagues, Ms. Ingram, and also her assistant principal, Mr. Richardson. She is currently a seventh grade math teacher at CMS and a very great seventh grade math teacher. She's been teaching for twenty-one plus years. And her nomination is from, is from her school. It says, "I am honored to nominate Ms. Vicky Lake for recognition as an outstanding teacher. She demonstrates excellence in the classroom every single day through her commitment to student learning and engagement. Ms. Lake creates a welcoming and energetic environment where students are excited to participate." And we want to say thank you to Ms. Lake for the great job that she did. Congratulations to all of our winners and we just appreciate what you do. We appreciate parents for what you do in supporting Tenth County Schools. And there is no substitute of the month. They are not here tonight, so I'm not sure about that. That concludes that part.
Congratulations, everybody. Y'all are more welcome today. It's gonna get, it's really exciting up here.
Oh, yeah. I can't see it. Don't let me in, I ain't leaving. I'm taking the chair with me.
I believe you. Remember this when I see Alan tomorrow. Talk him to.
Talking to this lady.
Full of people. Really?
Really.
She's a good teacher.
I'm gonna get that whole peasant medal, peasant woman.
I know, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a minute. It's all good though, but I have to say it.
All right, uh, if everybody looking at their consent agenda, look over it, check it out, see if there's anything anybody needs to pull out. If nobody has anything to pull out, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is on the minutes? All right, motion by Ms. Eubanks, second by Mr. Edwards. Any discussion on the consent agenda? No discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any nays? Motion passed. All right, Mr. McCain, policy update.
All right, policy committee met at five o'clock and I've had a few to review. We reviewed section three. There were a few that were pulled out just for some, clearing up some language and then an emergency reading. And then there was a second reading for policy from last month, but were you reviewed and approved, all changes.
Sounds good. Um, so do we need to do the affidments individually or?
No, it'll be one big motion.
One big motion. Okay. Uh, all right, can we get a motion to approve, uh, policy section three? And then we have a second reading of policy one point one zero two one, uh, a first reading of policy three point three zero zero one, three point four zero two, three point four zero four, and emergency reading of policy one point eight zero five one. Got a motion by Mr. LaBelle, second by Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion on those? Dot com.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just have one question about the student representative. Um, I know we changed that to plural in there. So are we at some point considering having more than one?
Next year, I think.
Okay, I, I mean, maybe I missed that, but I'm.
Yes, so effective next school year, we were going to have multiples, perhaps one from each high school. Uh, but we were going to allow Mr. Narcisse to finish out his, to finish out his term.
Okay.
To do it to your, his tenure on the, as the student board rather, yes, beginning next year.
Which he graduates.
Yes, he will graduate this year as a senior. So we would, we, we thought we would revisit that, but a policy, the policy could be changed.
That's also. He's been a good verse.
And that's also something we need to look to get in place before the end of this coming school year, right? Or who is gonna be for the next.
Correct, yes. We'll need to look at that second semester.
Okay, I, yeah, I was just wondering about that.
I will say, and then we're gonna review, uh, next month is, uh, four point one zero zero through four point four oh eight. So it's the first half of section four, since we'll be reviewing. If anything you wanna pull out, just email to Dr. Bird and we'll talk it over.
You said one zero zero and what, to one zero eight?
Yep, four point four zero eight, about halfway through.
All right, that comes. Thank you. So, uh, y'all know I like to bird walk a little bit. But, uh, so I've scripted my thoughts here, so I'll stay, I'll stick to the point. So, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board prior to y'all's vote. On one of those items in your cons, uh, in your agenda was the, uh, policy change for social media. Um, so let me tell you why I'm interested in that. I'm glad all of you are seated when I say this, because it's gonna be a shock. I don't like Facebook. Uh, I envision that Satan sits in his flame retardant recliner every morning and reads the chaos on Facebook while drinking his coffee and grins from ear to ear as people post opinions with no facts, tear each other down and tell us what they ate for dinner. With that said, I also appreciate the fact that my grandfathers, both of them, my dad, my uncles, my father-in-law, and some of you fought for our country to defend the freedoms which allow people to speak freely. It's unfortunate that some abuse that freedom. That speech, however, is for another platform and another venue and another time. And it will contain verbiage such as cowardly, insidious, and attention-seeking. But for the purpose of tonight's policy revision, it's important that I have a bit more latitude in dealing with our employees who may take for granted that whatever they post on social media can impact their credibility as an educator and our credibility as a school system. A system that I am evaluated by you to manage. Everyone has their own opinions, perceptions, and feelings, but we also have the ability, and I think the expectation, to share those things responsibly. Simply by adding this recommended verbiage as an expectation for our employees, I think it makes the statement to all of us that we need to be careful what we say, whether that be purposefully, accidentally, or erroneously. If parents aren't trusting us with their most precious commodity, then we need to be held accountable for repercussions that our social media footprint may cause as it relates to our character as educators and board members. I appreciate you considering this change in policy and thanks for letting me say that prior to the vote. Sir. Anybody else having a discussion or things to say on the matters? Okay, there's no further discussion. Uh, all in favor of basically policy A through D being passed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion here, motion passes.
Thank you all.
And Dr. Bird, your special report.
In your online folder tonight, uh, under, under my name, you'll see a document that says early post-secondary opportunities for the current school year. Wanted to just share with you the participation from our three high schools for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Our total for all three schools, um, as right as it stands now is four thousand six hundred thirteen potential Epsos, as we call them, to be earned by our students this year. And we are very proud because that's a, that's a pretty significant increase from last year uh, when we had about thirty-four hundred Epsos, uh, in our high schools. So just great job to our students and our high school staff. And, uh, if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to, to field those. But just wanted to share with you the great things that are going on in our high schools. The only other thing I have tonight is Ms. Cheryl needs to talk to you, uh, about the annual convention. So she's going to come up and finalize some details with you all. And then after she finishes, then Dr. Avery, who is our HR supervisor, she's going to come and share some information with you as well. Mr. Vice Chair, that, that concludes my report unless someone has a question for me, um, after these ladies finish.
Any questions, Dr. Bird?
Sure.
Me again. Okay, so the G S B A conference in November. Everybody's already signed up, registered, hotels are done. The only thing I need from y'all is to know who is gonna go to the U Trust Dinner. Um, they do a lot of our unemployment work and they are having an awards ceremony. But reservations, you and a plus one.
And they usually give us a check.
Yeah.
We use the teacher appreciation billboard out there.
All right.
Yes. So I just make, need to make sure everybody's going to go. Yes. You will ride a bus from the hotel to the historic bell tower and that's where your dinner.
Where's that?
And that's all I have.
Yes, where's the plus one?
You'll get on the, well, you can drive if you want to, but I have signed everybody up for the bus, just in case you don't wanna drive. It'll be at the historic bell tower in the middle of downtown Nashville.
That's the Friday night?
The Friday night. And I'll send it, I'll have all of your itinerary ready for you by the time we go.
When is the deadline on that, as you know?
The twenty-fourth of October.
And that's on November the fourteenth?
Yes.
The Friday fourteenth?
November the fourteenth at seven P M. Any questions for me? Okay, that's all. Thank you. And then Dr. Avery.
Dr. Avery. Doctor.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I've not talked to everyone individually, but with Tonya Avery, I was your baby's teacher in second grade. It's been a long, long time ago. Jason, it was you. It was Lane.
She was a, she was a drummer.
I was Alexander then. So I have a couple positions. Uh, due to the increase of both instructional and operational technology demands, we are requesting the addition of two technology specialist positions depending on the applicants, depending on their qualifications. The cost could be anywhere from one hundred twenty-five thousand to one hundred seventy-five, and that would include both salaries and the payroll liabilities. These will be reflected in the one forty-one general purpose school fund budget account seventy-two two fifty, object code one twenty-one. If approved, our finance team will present budget amendments to move existing funding to cover the cost of both of these positions. Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, um, we request to get the approval for both of those positions.
And I can give a little more if, if y'all have any questions. So it's entry-level tech. So basically, um, Kevin over there who's trying not to stare a hole through my brain right now, uh, knows that we're basically just kinda underwater. I mean, e- every year as technology needs increase, more and more wireless capability, more and more things in the building, cybersecurity labs, CTE labs that, that require technology to make them run, it just, do what?
Forward lab.
Forward labs, mega, all Megatron, mechatronics, all that kinda stuff. Anyway, um, it just requires more and more tech and we really just don't have enough. And this won't be enough, but these other two entry-level will help. They can work on Chromebooks, they can fix stuff. I mean, you know, we just, we need to put it out there. We're gonna hopefully snag a couple graduates, to be honest with you, uh, that will wanna apply and do it. But we, we just need more help there. And, um, by policy, y'all have to approve any new positions. The money's in the budget to do it, but, you know, we can't even put it out there to request, uh, you know, folks to apply until you approve for us to have those two new positions, 'cause they are additions from, you know, what we did in the budget.
So this is to help you, Kevin?
The minimum requirements for a position, if y'all figure that out.
The minimum, it'll, it'll be in the posting, uh, the, the minimum requirements. I mean, you wanna talk on that any, Kevin?
Um, I prefer to get somebody that's got their three Comp TIA certifications, like, like if they graduated from TK.
TK.
That would be ideal.
A lot of things they're gonna learn on the job too, so that will increase as they go.
They're gonna have to.
And it's one twenty-five to one seventy-five?
It depends on their certifications and remember that's a combined amount for both of them. And then, but that also includes, you know, their insurance benefits, all that kinda stuff.
Now, I'd be able to say that applying that to the TK or Cataphon.
We are being recorded there, Kevin. But, uh, but no, they, they'd be entry-level.
Yeah, it could be anywhere from forty to forty-nine thousand dollars would be their starting pay.
Depends on what certifications they hold, that kinda stuff, experience.
How many do we have now?
Five for all fourteen schools.
Yeah.
Think about that, all techno, printers, access points, switches.
Students have their individual devices.
Chromebooks.
Well, one-to-one now, so it's, that's always constant.
We've, we've just been very sensitive this year.
It'll get worse.
It is. It is.
More and more keeps getting added to the line. Yep.
Just going digital.
And this fund is showing us.
From within the budget, like, you know, we had, uh, um, uh, you know, some teachers that either left and like, and we didn't have to replace them because the numbers didn't go up like we thought they would. I mean, there's money in there that y'all will be able to see. And Billy wrote the financial report and he'll tell you a specific line item, which can pull it to make it work. It won't be in addition to the budget.
I'll make a motion. Hold on a second. All right, uh, motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. McCain. Any further discussion on the two, uh, approvals for entry-level tech? All right, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Hey, our, our special end department would like to request a new position for a behavior tech. The position is being funded on, under the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, under the partnership for systemic changes through the preschool. And it was awarded a few weeks ago. Um, this position will serve students with disabilities in the pre-K and preschool classrooms. He or she will assist in conducting functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans for students. Further assisting teachers and parent professionals on implementing behavior strategies to help students access their tier-one instruction. Um, this will be a ten-month position. If approved, our finance team will soon present budget amendments to recognize this recently awarded funding. Um, these will be reflected in the one forty-two school federal projects fund budget account seventy-two two twenty, um, object code one thirty-five. Mr. Vice Chair, I request the board approve the behavior tech position for students with disabilities.
All right, anybody wanna make that motion? All right, motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Ms. Eubanks. Any discussion on this position?
That funding was just recently awarded, right? So we didn't know about.
Just two weeks ago and so Ms. V asks Billy if he'd bring it for you all so we can get someone hired in to help our babies.
No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Three for three.
I know, it's just gonna hurt them.
He's actually, so Mr. Fields is, um, representing us at Munford Middle right now at their awards thing for the, uh, for, yeah, the, also they did with Mike. So he's there, uh, giving a little speech on our behalf, since we have.
Guess we can excuse his absence.
That's completely up to you. I'll tell him.
All right, capital projects and super school report, Mr. Hunter.
This is getting to be a fun time of year. Talk about the fun times. I was scrolling back through pictures and trying to see where we were and I didn't send one forward to, to post where you go, where we were. But I should be able to get through our photos here this evening and catch you up where we were as I walk you through. We're gonna have, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into the capital improvement projects, 'cause we're gonna be discussing that plan here on our next work session, which I believe is the twenty-eighth. So we'll have that, so we'll dive, we'll dive into that one. So this evening we'll go through the super school, if you will, to let you know why in fact it is super. So, um, people have asked about the schools, you know, what's your flooring gonna be? How are you gonna keep it up? Well, we don't have to wax, so that's one of the longevity, the savings that we'll get to have. But in turn, we, we, we have these very large, um, janitors. But the closets themselves aren't large, but if you walk through, they're just small tubs, to be honest with you. But we, they can't say that we didn't put enough of these in the school to keep the school clean, far as just hot water in general. The temperature and, and Dr. Tomlin and I recently walked, but the process here essentially, guys, is hot water, is to a degree. You're not really using, we're not using cleaning gauges for the most part, so just good hot water. So, uh, AVM, our, uh, our cleaning services, they, they'll be excited to know this list, uh, product they'll have to provide. This here, this is just little fun facts. As teachers went through, they got to see that not only as they walk in their room, they automatically lights for paranoid, however, they'll have the option to demo. So as, as, as we've learned through this whole building process, that lighting in general, whether it's natural lighting or proficient lighting, but they, they'll, they'll have that feature that, um, I think's pretty cool. I've been asked about water bottle fillers. We'll have those. We didn't, we didn't let COVID tell us that we're gonna keep those around. Up top in the right corner, you're gonna see one of the teacher workstations. Not only do you have the work area here where you'll have printers and technology or whatnot, but over in the top, you'll see where you've got a kitchen set up where they'll be able to take, well, we're not gonna call them loungers or break rooms, but work rooms, and they also have bathrooms in each.
The faucet, the sink or the water dispensers, is that a code upgrade?
A code upgrade?
Yeah.
Oh, the bottled water?
Bottle fillers.
That's a good idea. I don't think it is, but.
I wondered, I, I.
That might be.
Well, I can assure you, if we didn't go to, we had to get, they would've let us know how quickly we needed.
Well, I, I.
It was asked quick. Well, the nurse came through and so that was one of the things that she did ask about. She did ask about our bottled water.
Well, we, you know, all the code upgrades are for safety purposes anyway. That's why.
That's right. I guarantee you filling up a bottle with that thing instead of using the water fountain during the flu season.
Absolutely.
It's healthy.
Um, again, just some other shots to let you know where, where we are in progress, 'cause all the way through for the most part, or at least to the, the one there on the end, you might still be missing some kinda fixture faucet, but they're tiled, the floors are down. Um, they're working through the, the plumbing trim out. The, the one here in the middle, um, I believe that's the, uh, the CDC class room of the middle school. They've got, they were very excited whenever they walked through. One on the right's definitely where, where the washer and dryer hook up in the, in the CDC classroom in the middle school. So, again, coming from a temporary school, if you will, the tents is what we've clearly, we've been forced to call them, but, uh, big upgrade. They're pretty exciting. Your, uh, middle school locker room, that's just one angle of it, but it's, they're, they're, uh, coming right along. They'll have the flooring and they're actually finished very soon. You got the bottom again, just another work area where they've got the hard surfaces, the cabinets already in. This here's gonna be the middle school library. Again, you'll see the store, where, where, what we refer to as the storefronts, that your office areas, just a nice, good, clean, current look. Carpet's already in. Was asking about the locker rooms, um, your locker, this, I'm not sure if this is the, the boys or the girls, but both of them have, on the boys and girls side, there's two different locker rooms in the middle school. One has capacity of fifty lockers, one has forty-eight lockers. So on both, there's two. So, um, this here on the bottom, on the left side, that's the band, that's the band room in the middle school. Kitchen, come, I mean, actually, I think we're, I, this thing should hit, run through a test next week. They're gonna start like firing up equipment, you know, all of the, um, they're gonna go through, they'll hand it over with, it's already been tested and everything. But that's, they're gonna start testing that stuff next week. This bottom left is gonna be the playground that you heard Dr. Tomlin referred to as the claw. All your surfaces in here are gonna be, there'll be concrete, there will be some surface, there'll be, there'll be the floor and play concrete. Guys, that's gonna be a cool feature that the kids always have a nice, clean, storm blows through. Literally it passes over and they get to go outside and play and not playing in the mud. That's, that, didn't realize how big of a deal that was that I came to work in the school system. Again, this, over here in the right-hand side, the picture didn't really turn out well. That's more of the kitchen area. They've already got shelving that's being delivered and put in. Bottom right, sorry, that, that's a, that's a typical layout of your kindergarten classrooms with the Cubbies and all, and mo, and all of the elementary schools that will have some type of Cubby system for, since we don't do lockers these days. But again, just progress across the elementary school here to where you see all the cardboard on the floor, they're protecting, so the final floor is down. They've got the L V T where it belongs, they've got the carpet where it belongs, they're, they'll hold off on polishing the concrete once they get further, but they're actively, um, pushing through the technology. I know they've come out and started hanging some of their access points. So fire marshal, we have, we have been approved above ceiling as far as our inspections, um, all the way through the elementary school. That if you, if you've toured, the only area that we, that we lack would have been the, the fourth and fifth grade hallway area for you guys that are familiar with that one. So, and if you haven't been, let's, let's get out and check, it's a lot cooler in person. Again, just another workspace over at the, uh, elementary school. One of their restrooms. Oh, no, that's gonna be a future water station there on the right, sorry. That's another one of the water fountain where the bottle filler will be. This is a cool room.
That's a video, I know, when you, when you go to the right, you don't play.
Does it got, does it got volume on it? I was talking, I was talking, I was leaving your voicemail.
I straightened up ass.
Because just, let, let's just drag this in there. This is why I don't want you to play. If you're leaving your voicemail, we had a little issue the last couple days. They sent us the wrong doors for the inside, 'cause we kept going, those don't, those don't look right. There's something, those don't look right. They sent the wrong doors, y'all. So that's, if that's the voicemail, yeah, you don't need to play that.
I don't think it was, I think it's.
We were both a little fired up. I know, right? They ordered the right ones, but the door company did not send the, I mean, there's semi-truck full of doors. We think we got somebody else's. That is correct. We think they may have been at other school. We may have got somebody else's door.
This just was, this has just kinda been a room that we've always, it's the art room over here and it's, it's the window, the layout, the, the cool office area. It was just wonderful.
And that's the finished look right on the floor. That's the polished concrete. In the, the hallways and like this art room will have that polished concrete look. Uh, it, it looks, it looks really good. You kinda see the imperfections in the concrete. It, it looks, it looks cool.
And I, and I've been assured like as far as the durability of the floor itself, I mean, it's an industrial floor. I mean, it's one that I've been brought the general building. Like, Hunter, you put, you can run a backhoe. I mean, uh, four wheels through here if you want to. You're not gonna damage this floor. So hopefully that is, you know, in fact, and watching the process and when it goes down, I mean, it's pretty intense getting it down and grinding and, you know, them coming back with the fillers and the, the sealer. So it's, it's been quite the journey. We have had, we've had a fun week. We've been out there to get some, uh, just miss some quiet, I wouldn't, I don't wanna say quality control, just making sure that it's right. We've tweaking, tweaking a few things and they, and they responded very well whenever we found these, you know, a couple, you know, mishaps, if you will. Actually, one that we thought we were bringing to their attention, they already had, you know, already had the go button on. They just didn't hit us with the, the bad news whenever they found it. So that's what's been very, you know, for us. We've, we've had a team that's kept us abreast, kept things off our plate when we didn't necessarily need to know about it. They already had it under control. But this one today, I think, this one.
We found a few things.
Yeah, there was something today that was like, hold on, man, this is gonna be a line item. Like, hold on, I don't think so.
I know at our last meeting, we don't have like move-in dates. I know we're from phase in, but how is that looking? I know from middle school, you know, 'cause, I mean, in all reality, we're weeks away here.
Yeah, correct. So October the twenty-first is when the, the furniture's supposed to leave and be then supposed to be on our site, the twenty-second. They'll offload, begin installing around the twenty-third and they'll just start walking across the building. And they will come in increments of very couple weeks that they'll, they're given two weeks a section, if you will, and all. So I don't wanna, I know we're being recorded and I know y'all, but I'm hopeful by Thanksgiving, well, I'll be very thankful that we can be relaxed and hey, we're fixing to get in here. So then we will have, we've been scheduling some workdays. Court, trying to coordinate some workdays for teachers to be able to come in and decorate some before, so they don't have to come in over their, um, Christmas break. So we're working on, giving some afternoons where they can come over and we hang around, help out however we can. But to answer your question, I, we're pretty, pretty comfortable that we should be able to start getting some of the staff in there in the, we say.
Well, Kyle and Marty, we're coordinating everything through Kyle and Marty and then they're sharing it with their team so that they know, hey, they're a team. Hey! So they're sharing it with their team and then they're spreading it out, you know, so that they know there'll be specific dates they can come in, afternoons, whatever, to start, you know, getting stuff done, so they can get it done as it comes. But we're working on those phases with them because, you know, so they can get it done as it comes. But we're working on those phases with them, because, you know, there are adjustments that have to be made, uh, you know, as, as we go.
And we've also coordinated, you know, trying to coordinate with them technology, helping them get that stuff moved over so over Christmas break, because they all use their technology until they go to Christmas break, right? Well, then we gotta get moved during that small window, oh, we're getting it hooked up, get it tested. So we're working through some of those, you know, challenges that will be. The life you can't do until that time comes. But as far as furniture and move-in, I mean, you're gonna start seeing, first November, you're gonna be able to walk through the middle school and see areas, it's like, man, like, and they would be able to come if we could, you know, if we had that area.
Yeah, middle school, I, I, I guess I'm a little concerned with elementary school. I mean, I don't know, but I guess.
It'll be done. It'll be done. I mean, seriously, because they started one side, as quickly as they were able to do, it, it.
I can, I mean, I can understand the, the question of concern, but I'm comfortable telling you that I'm comfortable and take that for what it's worth, but, um, I'm putting my name out there, my word out there, that Ron's spleen's gonna get me in the scope, so I'm comfortable with that.
It looks good. And then you also think about, so ABM, right, so we have to end ABMs, you know, that contract we have with our custodial crew, ABM, for those out there that don't know that, it's a, you know, we have to curtail that contract and then open it back up in the new school, so that contract's gonna be a little more, because we're adding more square footage that contract. I mean, right now, basically, they're cleaning the interim buildings and all that area, where their square footage is gonna increase astronomically when they get over here to this other bill, to the, the super school. So they're gonna have to, uh, we have to adjust that contract, so like, what's the stop and, and start? So, what, like, we said, like, you know, after whatever it was. What's the last day of first semester, December nineteenth?
Yes, a half a day ago or half a day.
Yeah, so it'll probably be something like December nineteenth. That's the last day for, you know, teachers and students. Then on December twentieth, ABM starts at the new building. You know, so we can phase them in, so they can go ahead and be getting their stuff done before everybody comes in, you know, after Christmas break. Uh, we gotta get that done, because once they, you know, they'll be using the bathrooms and the garbage emptied and all that kind of stuff, so we've gotta phase that in and then out.
We gotta get the internet that way too.
And the internet, yep, so we can test it. And all the, and all the HVAC, uh, what was that, the HVAC and the Wi-Fi?
They gotta be balanced, they need internet to do, to do it.
The HVAC systems need the Wi-Fi. I mean, you can set, I mean, you know, Kyle can have an event going on at the elementary school, and him, and him be at home and think, oh, is the air on in the gym? He can do it from his phone. I mean, it's all updated stuff, you know, it's, 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 it's cool. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this again, for everyone present and everyone who is listening virtually. This new build is sixty-five-five. If we were to rebuild the old schools where they were in the same footprint, it would be in excess of sixty-eight million, which is more money. We have increased this school by only four thousand square feet. The old ones were two hundred and four thousand square feet, the new ones are two hundred and eight thousand square feet, less than one percent increase in square footage. So we got a bigger building for less money, and it's just designed so much more efficiently. That's why it does that. I mean, it's just designed so well, and it's safe, you know, the kids, between fences and the interior playground and the claw, uh, it's just safe, ballistic film on the front, storm, both the, both the cafeterias being storm shelters. I mean, it's just, you know, of course, the other ones were, you know, forty years old and twenty, so, I mean, that's gonna, it's gonna be better. But just for the record, you know, there are a lot of mis-facts out there. Uh, that's what I just said, is those are facts, so.
So once we're done with these, we're gonna start renovation on the old school and the building.
You would need a bond for that, so you can ask the, you can ask the county commissioner.
But these went so smoothly.
Yeah, I'm not, I have no comment on that.
Is anyone having questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You getting excited?
Yes, I just needed the new.
He said I'm out.
All right, um, does anybody else have any, any other business for this evening? Yeah, the, the one that we got, uh, Mr. Ryan Riperton, um, we, we had the public appearance by the board, he spoke with Dr. Collins beforehand. As long as it's regarding something we discussed tonight, we can, uh, we can allow him to speak, so he would like to address the board this evening, Mr. Riperton.
Yeah, uh, appreciation. Dr. Collins, uh, timely and professional, uh, from answering my addresses, but you, I appreciate that, so.
Yes, sir.
Whether we agree on the, the major outcome here, but, uh, the, the incident, I believe that it's referencing the social media policy change. Uh, I have, uh, questions to the board as to how does the public know these policy changes are being made, and what is the, uh, what is the action item that's going to be had to where the parents can now make an informed decision based off of what, uh, the incident held. This incident involved not only the school board and the schools, but also the city. And the city has, uh, given me a, a poor answer, in my opinion, uh, that, that they don't want to set a precedent uh, to, to say anything from a public standpoint. I, I firmly disagree with that. I think that is a, a bad answer. And I would like to ask that you guys set a better precedent, because there is no moral equivalency between what was incited or required here and what is dealt with on a day-to-day basis with, uh, the school board, the schools, and the cities themselves. So this is different. This is not the same, and I think this should be addressed publicly, so parents can make an informed decision on how they go about their day-to-day in the city and in the schools that are involved here. So, uh, three billion people have access to what the incident that happened, three billion. So in, 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 in some way, shape, form, fashion, three billion people could have been exposed to what was done, and to me, it's unacceptable. Uh, again, I appreciate, uh, the, the strong words that were out there. I'm still not a hundred percent clear, which we can, we can chat later on what those policy changes were. I'm not after that, I'm not after discipline. I'm after public acknowledgement, so parents can be informed to make their own decision. Again, the city chose to go a different direction. I disagree. I think it's a poor decision. I'm asking you guys to, uh, make a different decision, and based off that, I'd like to give some verbiage around what I think that verbiage could be. Uh, we, the county, uh, the, the Tipte County School Board are aware of views expressed by a small subset of employees regarding recent events. We take matters like this seriously, and we are currently reviewing each individual, uh, each individual situation. Comments celebrating violence against anyone are unacceptable and do not align with our views. When you can post that, something simple like that on your social media, highlight the policies that are being changed, and that, to me, is an acceptable, uh, handshake, uh, may not be exactly what I want, it's not exactly what you want, but it's a, a common ground between what I think is fair in this instance, so. Uh, I appreciate you guys listening. Uh, what is, what is the next step, and can you answer the question, how, how, how's the public gonna know this is being made?
Right, a hundred percent. Well, uh, and I'll, I'll say this, I mean, number one, every time the policy's passed, and we did an emergency read on this one. Usually it takes two full meetings, but this was an emergency read, which means they got it done in one meeting, and so that will be posted on our website. Uh, the new policy updated, uh, that came from that, so you can read the actual verbiage in there. Um, so that's number one. That's how they're gonna know that. Uh, and also, if you don't mind, will you send me what you just read?
Hello.
Okay, yeah, that would be beneficial.
Ask Paul?
Yeah.
You're saying it's posted on the website. How do people know it's on the website? And I get there's homework, and we as parents have to be involved, and we have to do some more. I get that. But again, this is not the same as a day-to-day operation. How do they know you posted something on the website for me to go do my own? Can you put that on your social media? If I provide some language around, and obviously you guys vote on it and agree on it and do your thing, is, is social media, this is a social media incident. I think this is a great way to put it on there, by social media. Hey, holy.
Yeah, ours is a website where we make announcements, not where we, not where we post our views on stuff. That's the difference, but.
But to let them know that something's there.
Right, but there's, but there's nothing wrong with putting something on so, on our social media site that references, hey, check out these policies. If you go to this tab and look at this, these are our policies, these are updated policies, these are what happen. Of course, this being livestreamed helps and recorded, and we can go to those meetings as well. Um, but I, I, I think that's my opinion now. The board is my boss, but that, that's my opinion, is how we direct it to that. Does that sound about right, Dr. Bird, as far as, because the policy's there to get to? I mean, that, that, that's what I would do. I mean, that's how I think it would be most, if, if we kind of give everybody a reminder, remember, as we make policy changes, they are here. You know, again, we have some here, go, go check them out.
Parents don't go to the website to look.
They don't.
And everybody is on social media, unfortunately. That's where you get your news.
That's why I'm asking for this extra step in this, this particular situation. I wouldn't ask this again, this is just day-to-day business. This is not, to me, day-to-day business, and I think if we all had sidebar conversations, we could come to an agreement on at least that particular.
Right. Is there a way to share the board policies from the website onto the tennis schools page?
Yeah, we could put, we could put a link, we could do, if we did like a, uh, you know, a social media post, like, you know, the information, like he was talking about, something like that, and then include the link that'll send you directly to the policy section of the webpage, so they don't, you know, have to look for tabs and bypass everything else. I mean, there's, absolutely, there's a way to do that, yes.
Use their access with parents.
Sure, sure. I mean, the, the whole thing is, in my opinion, you know, we don't wanna, we don't want anything to look like we're hiding anything. You know, we want you to have access to the stuff we have. That's the whole reason we livestream and record these meetings, you know, so, yeah, there's, you know, we don't want anybody, well, we did it just so we can say we did it, and then, no, you know, we want everybody to know what we did. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't care if all three, what'd you say, three billion?
Three billion.
I don't care if all three billion of those folks just heard my little speech. That's fine with me.
That'd be awesome.
And I don't care. That's why I said it. Plus, I'm old and I just don't care no more, right? But, uh, but yeah, I mean, I think that's a good, I don't have a problem with that, you know, if, if the board is good with that and wants to give you that direction, I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's probably the easiest one.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
No, I don't have a problem with it. But will you email me that verbiage you put in there? I would like to look at it.
Should I include others, since it's a, this is gonna be a board decision?
I can, I, I can forward it to everybody. Yeah, and, and we have a couple board members that are absent, including the board chair. He's, he's sitting in very graciously and doing an outstanding job, by the way, uh, but the board chair is absent, and, uh, so is Mike, one of our others, so I want to make sure they're included as well, so I can get them that verbiage too, so they can have a response, if, if that's okay.
Perfect, fine.
Yeah.
If you have anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No, thank y'all. Appreciate you. Thank you, once again, I appreciate.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. No problem. No problem. That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything to say about anything in the last business? If not, um, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. McCain. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?